All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the library meeting room today. This is a temporary move just for this month to accommodate the Village Hall's move to the new building. So hopefully, starting next month, we'll be back in, back in the Village Hall. So with that being said, the time is now 7:01 PM. Welcome to the June 26, 2024 meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Yes. Trustee Doherty is not in attendance this evening. Trustee Humphries?
Here.
Trustee Gutia?
Here.
Trustee Sladek?
Here.
Trustee Toppick?
Here.
President Gagani?
Here.
All right, we will have the oath of office for our new trustee.
Pete, after me, real quick. Say aye, state your name.
I am Matthew Toppick.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed?
To the Office of Library Trustee?
To the Office of Library Trustee.
Of the Downers Grove Public Library.
Of the Downers Grove Public Library.
In the Village of Downers Grove.
In the Village of Downers Grove.
In the County of DuPage.
In the County of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support?
That I will support?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
The duties of the Office of Library Trustee?
The duties of the Office of Library Trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, thank you so much.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
All right, item number five is the approval of the May 22 regular meeting. And we, Caitlin did point out that the date on the minutes or the agenda is incorrect. So it is the May 22 regular meeting minutes.
I'm overruled.
All right. Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any corrections or comments? All right, if not, we will proceed with a voice vote. All those in favor approving, approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And all those abstaining?
All abstaining is not a benefit.
Abstain.
We have item number six, financial matters. May 2024 financial report and the June 2024 invoices.
All right, as you can see, we are 42% through the year. The library's revenue stand at 10% collected. Our library fund balance is negative, as expected. You may recall that the library has an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Downers Grove to cover any cash flow issues caused by the property tax collection cycle and our fiscal year. We are 7, 37.7% expended so far this year. We are over 100% in 5323, special legal, the majority of those expenses were on FOIA responses. 5346, data processing services is at 66% expended. One of the costs that comes out of that line is an annual cost, about $40,000 for the biblioteca maintenance on the sorter machine. 5420, insurance other policies is 90% expended because our annual premium is paid in January. And then 5770, capital equipment over $20,000 is at 66% expended, as you would expect from capital equipment over $20,000. That comes out in large chunks. And does anyone have any questions on the items?
Do you have a motion? Anyone with a motion to approve the financials as presented? Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the financial matters as presented. Caitlin, let's proceed with the roll call vote.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Gutia?
Yes.
Trustee Sladek?
Yes.
Trustee Toppick?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes. Thank you, the financial matters have been approved. All right, our next item on agenda is public comment. As you can see, we have moved the public comment podium over to the side just to make it a little bit easier for everyone to hear and see. But I want to review a few things before we get started. The public comment portion of this meeting is meant to be an opportunity for you, the public, to provide comments and feedback about the Downers Grove Public Library to the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. So all comments need to be addressed to the trustees. The public comment portion of the meeting is 30 minutes. As usual, we'll evaluate this at the 30-minute mark, extend time if we feel it's needed. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes, but the max is five minutes. We do have a timer off to the side for you to keep an eye on. If you're representing a group, please limit your comments to one speaker for your whole room. If a member of the public goes over their time limit, a motion for a five-minute recess, and we'll continue with public comment after the recess. If we run into more issues, then we will end public comments at that time. I apologize. Please refrain from applauding heckling inside conversations. So with that being said, we will open the floor.
Mr. Toppick? Hi, Ed Paulink, full-time Downers Grove resident. I guarantee it won't be applause when I come to say. So in my career, I'm a consultant right now, but in my career, I've had responsibility for product lines at software and data companies. Budgets, revenues far larger than the library is, and I was able to make my product lines very competitive and basically industry leaders in sales and market share. So last month, I was talking with some people, and they asked me how I thought my business experience might be applied to the library. And so I gave that a lot of thought, and I'm coming here tonight with a proposal for you to consider. So in business, a budget is much more than a financial statement, it's more than an accounting ledger, it's a quantitative statement of plans, and it shows what you plan to do, what benefits you plan to gain from that, as well as what it costs to implement those plans. The current budget process skips those first two points and really just focuses on the costs. So this is an example of a real business plan, this is what I used. I don't expect something this big to be applicable to the library, but I did think about what went into this, and there were four basic points, four basic principles that I used in putting this together, and I thought that that might be applicable here. So one is, I think the library should organize the budget according to the offerings of the library. This is the product line of the library. So library lends books, CDs, DVDs, there's online services, databases, events, et cetera, et cetera. So each of these should be a priority line item in the budget, and that's what the budget totals ought to be based off of. I understand that the village requires that the library submit a budget in a standard accounting ledger format, but that can just be derived from, from this, it's a subset of the, all the data that's there. But this larger set of data, I think, is more useful for the board to have the right sort of discussion in the budget. So that's it, you know, so that's number one, is organize it according to the offerings. Number two, each of those offerings should define quantitative goals for the coming year. If you're going to have a budget, it should be based on saying, this is the goals that we're trying to achieve. So, you know, there may be cases where you're looking to expand the number of people being served by something, or maybe like entice more teens to use the library, maybe you're looking to reduce costs, like for example, when the sorter was put in, the automated sorter that was going to reduce some of the costs of sorting the books and make the library more efficient. So it helps to be able to state these types of things, and in a quantitative way, because if you ask about those types of things, do you want to increase the benefits or reduce the costs, fight efficiencies, the easy answer is to say yes, all of the above. The hard part is when you actually have to put numbers on it, that's where it forces you to think more concretely about what your specific plans are going to be. And I think that thinking hard about it is going to lead to better decisions, and once you get the habit of doing that, it's actually becomes much easier to think that way. So I think that helps overall. So organize by line items, quantitative goals. The third thing would be to include metrics on here. So if you're going to have these quantitative goals, you want to have some metrics to show you the data that goes along with this. So what I prefer is having trend lines showing the last several years' worth of data so that you can see, you know, where things are, are they stable, are they increasing, are they decreasing? So for example, if you look at something, pick an example like some of my books, you know, I could see where it might be useful to have a graph in here that would show, like a layered, a layered graph that would show how many checkouts were done to, from books from this library to people in Downers Grove. And you have a second layer on top of that, how many books were checked out by people in this, in Downers Grove, but through the SWAN system from other libraries. And then the third layer on top would be how many people from outside of here have checked out Downers Grove books through the SWAN system. That would give you the overall picture, and it would show you the mix.
And you have one minute left.
And looking at that over time, within the shoot time project, what you want to do for the future. So that's the third. The fourth is putting down specific plans and costs, and this is where the cost commends. So if you're looking at change that you're tracking on that line, what are you going to do specifically about that? If you're trying to maintain the status quo, what are the costs associated with doing that? That allows you to line up the strategy with the specific plans here. There's a lot, obviously, I don't even have the time to go through all this here. As I said, I, you know, I put this kind of thing together in the past, it's been very helpful for me, I think it'd be helpful for the library. I would gladly volunteer my time to help answer any further questions or help put some of these things in place. I think it's the kind of thing you probably can't do in one shot, you really need to iterate on doing it. So I hope it's helpful, and you know how to reach me.
Good evening, Eileen Breiner, resident. Welcome, Matt.
Howdy.
At the last board meeting, I heard that a full-time social worker might be considered for the library. Up to now, the library has been experimenting with part-time social worker interns. Has the library gotten insurance coverage for this type of professional work being done for the library? If not, that's a big concern. Given the library's inability to keep confidential information confidential, I shudder at the thought of the library handling people's sensitive, private information. Are you aware that the Village of Downers Grove has a social worker on staff? In a report to the Human Services Commission, the social worker, Ms. Lippi, said she's not overloaded with work. Why would you want to duplicate this service when we already have a social worker working for the Downers Grove Village in the center? The cost of a social worker with benefits and professional liability insurance will be well over $100,000. The budget for 2024 for the library is now $7 million for the year. As the fiduciary of the taxpayers, you need to be mindful of cost versus need. The county has broke ground for a new crisis center in Wheaton with completion planned for summer 2025. As part of the county, Downers Grove residents will be paying for that also. Perhaps a village social worker could spend some of her time in the library, but to duplicate this position within the library is extravagant. It also shows mission creep on the part of the library. Today, we hear the term "staying their lane." I think that applies well here. Keep the lights on, books that people want on the shelves, and the building safe and maintained. Think long and hard about this. Once someone's hired, it's hard to let them go. I'll leave a copy of the Human Services Commission report with the secretary. Please review it to familiarize yourself with the many services and coordination provided by Ms. Lippi, the village social worker. Thank you.
My name's Noel Manley, and I'm a president of Darien, Illinois, and I'm an interloping Native. Our Native Land Statement celebrates Native victimhood and oppression and says nothing about Native success. I don't know if any of you know, but yesterday was the 148th anniversary of the Battle of the Greasy Grass, or otherwise known as the Battle of the Little Big Horn, with the combined forces of the Cheyenne and soon defeated George Armstrong Custer in his Seventh Cavalry. Unfortunately, none of them survived. But it's something that's sort of lacking in the Native Statement, but onto my real notes here. If you're a person who identifies themselves as a library board member but does not identify which library, and in so doing, posts an objection to a state law on social media, you become the subject of removal from this board. However, if you're a board member who identifies yourself as a Downers Grove Public Library trustee and makes racially inflammatory remarks, you get to remain on the board. If you're alleged to have shared non-confidential documents with a taxpayer, you'll be censured and removed. However, if you disclose the confidential data of 28,000 Downers Grove Public Library cardholders, it remains to see, it remains to be seen what's going to happen. On June 3, 2023, 24, the DuPage County State's Attorney's Office reprimanded the Downers Grove Public Library for releasing the confidential data of 28,031 library cardholders. In this correspondence, the library director, in this correspondence, the library director, the State's Attorney specifically stated, "I wish to remind you that as public officials employed at the public library are entrusted with personal and confidential information by the residents of Downers Grove. These residents trust that their information will be kept confidential by the Downers Grove Public Library. The public's trust is vindicated by the General Assembly's unambiguous protection of those privacy rights in state law." The State's Attorney went on to say, "In addition, I encourage you to take all necessary steps to train and retrain your employees on their confidentiality obligations to ensure that no further breaches of public trust and competence occur at the Downers Grove Public Library." So it's evident from the State's Attorney's reprimand that the director and the professional staff do not know what they're doing with respect to confidential data of the Downers, Downers Grove Library cardholders. This incident serves as just another example of the ongoing politicization of the Downers Grove Public Library. And to be clear, the same data request was made to the public libraries of Naperville, Westmont, Hinsdale, Oak Brook, Indian Prairie, and Orland Park, all of which were denied and whose denials were affirmed by the Illinois Attorney General Kwame Raoul. In fact, the Attorney General specifically stated, "The library cardholders' names you see meet the definition of a registration record, and any records that may exist containing those names fall within the scope of the Confidentiality Act. No provision of the Confidentiality Act prevents a person to receive a library, a library's registration records in response to a FOIA request." So you have the highest law enforcement officer in DuPage County, along with the highest law enforcement officer in the state of Illinois, agreeing on the following. One, this information is confidential. Two, releasing this information violates the Illinois Library Records Confidentiality Act. And three, this information should never have been released.
You have one minute.
So what is this board going to do? You set the bar so, so low on censure removal, you cannot ignore this official reprimand. Your duty is to supervise only one employee, the library director, and it's evident that you cannot do that, especially when this information was disclosed to provide political cover for the release of board members' library card information. One, this board is going to take responsibility for this fraud and fraud. Your failure to do anything meaningful to remediate this mess only demonstrates your rank hypocrisy and corruption and the placement of politics over good governance. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Warner Keen, I'm a resident of Downers Grove. I am pleased as punch to see that discussion was brought up about the social worker. Before I retired, I was a social worker for 40 years. I worked on the west side of Chicago. I have spoken to the social workers who are here at the library, and they provide an entire array of services. There is a very large need for services because the village's social worker is a referral source, not anyone who provides direct treatment, which is what the social workers here were doing. DuPage Health is located in Wheaton. Persons who are indigent or lack transportation cannot access services. DuPage Health also does not provide family therapy, which impacts youth, as well as school services. I support the social worker being hired, as I have had ongoing dialogue with the social workers. There was a situation recently where persons, where a person was in a psychiatric crisis, and the Crisis Intervention Services in Wheaton were notified. They asked the library's social workers to refer to the police department. There are other direct services such as housing, support, intervention, old age, need for psychiatric services, school, these could be rendered by the social workers here. If the social workers are hired by the library, having been a social worker who was hired by a hospital, it would fall under the personnel principles of the library, and I would see that as being an issue. So therefore, with my background in social work, having spoken to the social workers, with the lack of services provided by Wheaton, I strongly encourage the library, the residents of Downers Grove, to support the ability to hire a social worker. Thank you.
My name is Marsha Pritchison, I am a Downers Grove resident and the mother of a gay son and a left-handed son. Even 70 years ago, left-handedness was considered the sign of the devil. We now recognize that there is no validity to that prejudice, but that is not true for those who are LGBTQ+. Some people still believe they are deviants and that they and their allies should be made to feel shame. I am not, nor will I ever be ashamed of either of my sons because of who they are. I am proud, not because one is left-handed and the other gay, not despite one being left-handed and one gay, but because they are decent humans. And as decent humans, they do not, for example, threaten or intimidate people in emails, voicemails, texts, or in person. Promiscuously drop the phrase "drag queen bingo" to elicit guilt and shame. Repeatedly claim there's a lack of safety in the library despite irrefutable evidence to the contrary. Proffer the ridiculous notion that you can catch gay from reading a book. Wield their heritage like a weapon when it is expedient to do so, yet fail to acknowledge their culture's long history of revering two-spirit people. Rage that transgender porn is being shoved down their throats, then prance around Pride Fest, snapping unsolicited pictures of young children. Waste another community's tax dollars on spurious FOIA's benefiting from the right to free speech while accepting none of the responsibilities. As a PFL member, I am taught to lead with love. Admittedly, it's hard for me to love those who despise a whole category of people, which includes one of my children. But I choose not to hate, rather, I feel sorry for them. They carry so much anger, I wonder where they can possibly find space for any joy. That is very sad. But I also feel hope. There are good, decent people in this world, and you are amongst them. So thank you for staying steadfast in your support of our loved ones. By providing books, materials, programs, and a safe space, you make this community a better place. Please continue to be the good allies you are. Please continue to maintain your composure and dignity in the face of the hostility and vitriol you receive from those few who exhibit shameful behavior. Please note that I and many, many people in this community support you in your endeavor to provide the very best in library services to everyone. Thank you.
To paraphrase Robert Frost, there are many people in the world who have something to say but can't, and many others who have nothing to say and keep saying it. There are some people, a number of people routinely attend the library board meetings who are in the second category. They have, have their names appear in the minutes, their names appear in the FOIA requests, and public comments, and so forth, that have, keep saying, making noise and saying nothing. A number of the folks who have nothing to say and keep saying it do not reside in Downers Grove. They do not pay taxes in Downers Grove. They do not have a vote in Downers Grove. While they have a right to an opinion, and have the right to say it, I would suggest to you that their opinions do not deserve credence. They don't have a stake here, and they use this podium to make political noise. So I thank you for your service, Mr. Toppick. It's going to be a pleasure to have you onboard, and I am grateful to the rest of you who give your time and attention to service to our community. Thank you.
Bill Nienberg, Downers Grove resident, decent human being, full of joy, taxpayer, voter, et cetera, and former board trustee member. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to announce a new chapter in my effort to hold this taxpayer-funded institution accountable to the taxpayers. Since my attempt to work from within was forwarded by this board's corrupt efforts to remove me, I will now continue in another arguably much more effective form. There will be much more to come on that in the coming months, but first, I have a bit of housekeeping to take care of. I think it's important to illustrate and to put to rest any questions about why this is necessary, and I'm going to use the board's censure resolution against me as the perfect example. As a reminder for everyone, this board passed a censure for three infractions, conflict of interest, breach of confidentiality, and alleged unwillingness to work with the rest of the board. The conflict of interest stemmed from a social media post on my personal account, which stated my personal opinion informed by a general reference to my experience as a library trustee and was completely unattributed to the Downers Grove Library or the Downers Grove Library Board. The breach of confidentiality was alleged to be in the form of a leaked document in violation of a policy that, in the end, was revealed to have not existed. Under scrutiny, that was later downgraded to a preference, but one admitted to have never been shared with me. This is not to mention the fact that no document was actually leaked, and the information that was shared never should have been confidential in the first place, unless you believe that proposed public policy should be developed in secret, which this library and this board apparently does. Then there was the pearl-clutching claim that I was unwilling to work with the other board members. This was, at best, a mischaracterization of a comment made in private. This was, at best, a mischaracterization of a comment made in private to one of the trustees where I wondered aloud if the board was willing to work with me, following the defeat of a measure where I had accepted no fewer than five suggested amendments from the other board members. In other words, it was a complete lie. Finally, this censure resolution was added to the agenda at literally the last minute, introduced and voted on in the same night as this board is prone to do to avoid public scrutiny, and was done at a meeting that they knew in advance I would not be in attendance. Now, the points raised in this censure carry quite a load of irony coming from this board. In the time that I was on the board, some of you took great pride in suggesting that we can all have different opinions and still work together, apparently unless those happen to be conservative opinions. One of you had an open line of communication to me, numerous lunches and calls, and a commitment to find common ground, but then you just went along with the crowd. One of you was appointed to be the adult in the room, but quickly became just another one of the children. One of you admonished the public about not taking ten minutes to confirm facts about safety, but couldn't take five minutes to confirm whether the policy that they were voting on me violating even existed. One of you preached "it starts with us" and encouraged us to personally commit to lowering the temperature of discourse in society, but then joined right in the blindside attack. One of you makes social media posts with "Downers Grove Library Trustee" in their bio and, in their capacity as trustee, attributes any and all concerns coming from the community as the product of white Christian nationalists. And one of you, who is uniquely expected to do so, never did anything in the two years I was on the board to bring the board together, to improve our discourse, or facilitate our And so this censure resolution was never about the allegations, each of them unsubstantiated at the time they voted on it and completely debunked in the aftermath. Instead, this was about what I was revealing on a monthly basis about how this board and this library operates. In the end, the censure said far more about you than it did to me, and was actually a self-center, so censure. It revealed you as hypocrites, confirmed your groupthink, and displayed your cowardice and incompetence, and demonstrated so clearly the need for external and independent accountability. So here's my commitment to the community and to the taxpayers about what comes next. I will work until every one of you is replaced by board members that prioritize safety and responsible spending, cease activism, and restore the library to its core purpose, fulfill your oversight role, and govern competently. Others will join me, and we will stop you from co-opting our public library and turn it into a progressive social justice enterprise on the taxpayers' dime. We will stop your divisive tactics that are purposely designed to undermine our culture, country, freedom, and families. I'm almost done. We will use the FOIA and enforce the OMA so you can't escape transparency, and we will use this next election for village council, as this is an election issue for this next village council election. We will use your antics as fuel for a referendum to turn this into an elected board. When it's all said and done, I promise that you wish, you will wish that you worked with me and kept me on the board, because I'll be a lot more direct now that I'm not. You may have removed me, but you did nothing to my commitment to the oversight. That was the main reason that I joined this board, and that commitment is undeterred.
We are at the end of our thirty-minute time. Can I have a show of hands of who else would like to speak? All right, do we have two more speakers? Does anyone want to make a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second to finish up our comments with the last two remaining individuals. Let me reset this really quick, one second. All those in favor of extending for the final two speakers, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and all those abstaining. All right.
Good evening, and welcome to the new board member. My name is Laura Hoist, and I'd like to express concern about the notion of hiring a social worker in the library. I do believe that is beyond the core purpose of a library. I believe it is fiscally irresponsible, and in light of the decisions made by this library board for the past three years, many of which have wasted significant money, specifically the RGW report, which has been referenced in previous meetings, so I won't go into it, but I am very concerned, and I don't trust the idea that a social worker would be serving the people of this library when we have displays of books that include pornographic material, when we have displays of books that support the far-left political agenda. This library is leaned way left, is way woke, and I just think it's a terrible idea to bring a social worker in as a quote-unquote "potential trusted adult" that even children may be affected by. So I think you ought to step back and consider leaving that one alone and focus on your true responsibility to all the residents of this district that want you to provide the core library services that are defined by statute in Illinois. Thank you.
Ted Brainerd, Downers Grove resident. The Downers Grove Library is not safe for our children. It's a ticking time bomb.
Can I ask everyone to...
So far this year, I've cited eighteen egregious incidents that have required the police to come to the library. This is insane. One visit is too many. And now add five more incidents in May alone requiring police to visit. Intoxication, fighting, porn, theft, threats, vandalism. Good work, board and director. The library director and the trustees in this audience might be tired of hearing me regarding children's safety, but my comments are meant more for the moms of Downers Grove, the vast majority of moms who have no idea what they're walking into as the doors open here at nine a.m. That said, and said, and said, the director and trustees have done little to nothing to secure our library for our children. But now, in the May meeting, they've just added a new bureaucratic game. Let's call it gotcha. No added security or safety for our children, but gotcha. A little background on the gotcha game. I've been asking the library director since last February, after she verbally and publicly stated "there's never been an incident of a drunk man in the children's room," thus inferring that I'm a liar. I've been asking her to please explain herself, since I had the incident report sent to me by the director herself, and offer an apology. Three months passed, no explanation, no apology, then the May meeting. When I asked again for a response, do I get a verbal public response from the library director? No. Rather, before I'm back to my seat, down comes your plant in the audience, reading an explanation that the director clearly buried in the April trustee board packet on page twenty-one of forty-five pages. Yes, the board packet meant for the trustees, not the public necessarily. Rather than a public verbal explanation, the director chose to bury her response in the April trustee packet. What a cheap shot. The drunk man in the children's room incident was between me and the director, verbally and via email. You know, back and forth, back and forth, the customary form of communication, the one that she and I had been using. But that ended in the May meeting. So I guess looking forward, alert Downers Grove, you can email, phone, chat with the library director, but be aware, as she might very likely now communicate back to you via an upcoming trustee board packet, trustee board packet. After these childish actions that evening, I approached the director as to why she chose to communicate via a trustee board packet as opposed to contacting me directly or verbally, publicly stating it herself in the April meeting. She said it was because I wanted to be a hundred percent transparent. Transparency, by definition, is totally visible, done in an open way, without secrets, implies openness so that there are no surprises later. Well, the May meeting gotcha game was certainly not transparent, but it was a surprise. Nothing says "we're done with you and you're drunk in the children's room and children's safety issues" like the library's director's childish actions in the May meeting. We're discussing children's safety in your playing games. Well, enough with the childish games. So out of line for a director and a breach of your own library board of conduct, I'm sure. Tonight, I demand a public verbal explanation and apology regarding this matter from the library director. Let's really be one hundred percent transparent.
Thank you for your comments, everyone. We are on to item eight, trustee comments. All right. I'd like to first welcome trustee Topic. I look forward to getting to know you and working collaboratively with you. I was not here at last month's meeting, so I know that some of the trustees share their polls for the year, so I wanted to quickly, I won't go into my mom version, I'll just quickly say, some of my goals are to visit other libraries. I got a little list. Trustee Sladek and I attended an event last month, and we got a list of all the area libraries, so we're kind of trying to go through and check them off, to kind of get an idea of what other libraries have, what they offer, what their spaces look like. It's been really interesting. I also am reaching out to the library trustees and trying to set up times to meet other library-area trustees, see what library trends are going on, what they're dealing with maybe in their communities, what are some exciting things they're doing in their communities. I really believe in building community and fostering community, so when we did the strategic planning sessions for the Downers Grove Park District, I was on a team with a couple of other members of other village entities, and we sort of talked a little bit about getting together and having coffee, and I thought that was a great idea. So something I think I really want to look for opportunities to set up things like that so we can not work in isolation as much, and everyone sort of knows what everyone's doing, and we can find ways to support one another, but also kind of keep each other in awareness of what we're doing. So I think that's a really good idea. I also have spent this past few years that we talked about learning what my weaknesses are and knowing where I need to learn more, and I am trying to take and find as many classes as I can. The ALA, the ILA, as well as several organizations offer free training to trustees, so I am committed to taking as many classes as I can possibly take. A lot of these are online, most of them are free, and I'm learning a lot about ways that I can be a better trustee and fulfill my duties even better. I want to say very quickly that I am a mom. My children have come to this library since they were very little. They have attended storytimes, and now it's a little bit older children. They come to the library by themselves. They come to study for their AP test. They come to check out books after school. And if you come here during storytime, it is full of moms and parents and children. We're happy. If you come here after school, it's full of kids checking out books, feeling safe. I think that's important to say because this library is full all the time. People feel safe here. But on that note, I know that there have been incidents. I know that we have a large unhoused population. I know that there are people in mental health crisis. I am thrilled that there is going to be some first-day training for staff members, mental health training for staff members, especially our people who are staff here who are here to help people who are in crisis. I think it's really important that we identify who is having a crisis of a mental health type and not something that's maybe dangerous, but someone who just needs someone to hear them. On that note, I understand that the village has a social worker, but that village's social worker unfortunately is in the building behind a door, and this is a public building where people walk in to all the time, and they need someone to talk to and someone to help them. And so I am interested to hear about how this budget is. I've looked over some things, and I want to hear more, and I want to learn more, but I don't want to close the door on the idea of having a social worker here that we, as a library, are paying for because it was important to us. And I'm grateful for the foundation that they were able to do that for several years for us. And the last little bit is, I love to see in the report sort of the different kinds of communities we serve, and sort of back-to-back were the Oak Trace community, and getting twenty-two new library cards signed at Oak Trace, and they had a spelling bee competition, and then to see all the things that were happening with the children. And so I was like, wow, we serve all these little, little, the youngest patrons, and then we serve our oldest patrons. And it just shows the vast amount of community that we are able to cover and the massive amount of people who this library means things to and the whole value for us. So thank you to the staff for that. That's it.
I also have been visiting other libraries in the area, and actually, as far I feel, there's one in Ohio. The impression that I have gotten overall is that many of the other libraries I've been to, they're lovely, they do a nice job with space management, they're doing a good job, no criticism as far as that goes, but they don't have the warm and welcoming atmosphere this one does. They feel like an old-fashioned library. The little kids are too quiet even while they're playing, and the, you know, teens are told to shut up even if they laugh, not when they're really causing a disruption. You don't see people talking out in the corridors, you know, families getting together, somebody meeting for coffee or whatever. And it's made me appreciate the atmosphere that this director and this staff have set up, because you don't come into this library without someone saying hello to you and welcome, and can I help you? And I really appreciate that about this library. That said, obviously, you know, we have other jobs to do as directors. Our job by statute is to establish, maintain, and support the library, and that's subject to a lot of interpretation. I've never heard anyone on this board say anything about politics or bring up red and blue states or political parties or anything like that, or identify as one particular member of a political movement or anything. I don't belong to any political movements or parties. Secondly, I want to say, as a retired attorney, you all know I'm not licensed anymore. I gave up my license when my husband got sick. We all have to understand that the law is not always clear, and sometimes there may be different statutes with different purposes that may conflict with each other, and you could put two lawyers in a room and you'll get two opinions, or two lawyers in a room and five opinions. Before I became an attorney, I was the FOIA, OMA, and Records Act officer for a state And like this library and this board had to rely on outside counsel for good-faith opinions on what was the right thing to do in releasing or not releasing information, or certain procedures we had to file, or what records we kept and so forth under those statutes. It's the nature of the law. Conflicts arise, and it's not really clear-cut. There aren't any hidden agendas on anything. Sometimes disputes arise over what a statute means, and someone reaches one opinion and someone reaches another, and we've seen that at play. And I think that that's something that those of you who use the Open Meetings Act and the FOIA, perhaps the Public Records Act, are probably aware of, or if you're going to then need to be aware of. It isn't as black and white as it may seem. Thank you for your attention.
Trustee Sladek has said with a lot more specificity and knowledge than I was going to say, but law is not always unambiguous, and as I read the library law, it leaves some words undefined. For example, what is registration information? Therefore, as she pointed out, we hire counsel to help us to, I mean, they're licensed to train and members of the bar, and that's what happened in this case. We, our staff, which the board hires, or the director, which the board hires, asked, as we have asked her to ask, an attorney to interpret the law so she could accurately carry out the law. Obviously, it turns out that there are multiple interpretations, but it was clear that no detailed information was released. The only thing that was released was the names of library cardholders over the age of eighteen. The attorney said nothing more. So that's what happened. Now, in retrospect, there could have been other interpretations, and maybe the other interpretations were accurate. The legal courts worked that out. The lit courts will bet out for the future, but, uh, it wasn't an intentional disregard of confidential information. Um, another point is, just to clarify for anybody who hasn't, uh, heard previous discussions about social workers, we have not hired a social worker yet, a full-time social worker. This board, at the request of a number of people who, in the community, who have come to us and made that request, asked our staff, our library director, to investigate the possibility of this, and therefore it may or may not become part of our budget, but we definitely will consider it. Um, I reminded, the statement was made that the village's social worker is a referring social worker. She is a wonderful woman, I know her personally, but she does not deliver direct services, which our interns and a full-time social worker, if we hire one, would be able to deliver direct services on the spot and help head off certain issues in the library and in other parts of the community that might, might be headed off, so, just to comment on that. Um, I want to echo, uh, another comment and, uh...
Trustee Clint, did you forget my name, did you?
The reason I wear an anter is I don't have my own. But, uh, no, the, uh, library staff did come to Oak Trace, and I had the, the joy of hosting this session, and they made a wonderful presentation on library services in general, but very specific information about eBooks, because senior citizens tend to really make use of the eBooks. And they did an outstanding job, and they signed up a bunch of new library cards the day they were there, and I thank the library for doing that. Another wonderful thing is that the latest issue of Discoveries hit the streets this week, and, uh, I urge everybody to take a look at it and see what wonderful things our library staff really is doing in the community. On the other hand, if you don't like what you read here, or you don't want the paper in your mailbox, there's a little note at the end saying, "You can remove yourself from the list," and it won't be in your mailbox, so, but I urge you to accept it and read it. Thank you.
Sure. I thought I would just take a minute and introduce myself. Uh, I'm Matt Topic. Uh, I was born in Downers Grove, grew up in Downers Grove, uh, came back to raise my kids in Downers Grove. I have a soon-to-be sophomore in college and a, and a senior at Downers Grove. Uh, my mom was born in Downers Grove, my grandfather moved out here from Chicago in the 1950s, so I have kind of a long history in this town. I grew up coming to this library. I'm very happy, uh, thrilled to, uh, to be here, uh, to, to serve this library. Uh, I'm a lawyer. Uh, my practice is mostly representing journalists and other people in Freedom of Information Act disputes with units of government. I've never had a dispute with, uh, the village of Downers Grove or this library, um, but it's an issue that obviously I know a lot about, and, uh, I take very seriously people's right, uh, to make FOIA requests, and I think that's a critical part of our democracy. Um, and lastly, I just, just want to thank all the people who've welcomed me so far, the staff have been very wonderful, my, my fellow trustees, um, so I, I really appreciate the warm welcome, and I look forward to fulfilling my job as a trustee and providing oversight to the village of Downers Grove.
All right. And last, I'm going to keep it, um, brief. I think the nice thing about going last as a trustee is I'll say wonderful things that I don't have to repeat, so, um, just welcome again trustee Topic to, um, the board. We had a chance to meet yesterday at this orientation, and, um, we're very excited to, um, have his insight and input on the board. Um, let me see. I, I did want to address, there was a comment made about the trustee board packets. They're not trustee board packets, they're for the public. That's why they're filled with information, so everyone understands what's happening with your money, your taxpayer money, um, and it's the accountability and transparency that's very important. Um, and, you know, something I always talk about is how important the department, departmental reports are, you know, there's so many wonderful things happening in the library, and it's very important that people really understand, um, that it extends a lot farther than just materials and books. There's a lot of wonderful programming, and, um, so those, in addition of involved, uh, since I've been on the board, to include incident reports and FOIA requests, and, um, you know, the next three months we'll see a lot of budget information, so that's something that's really important to you. Um, it's, it's definitely worth the review to, to see all of that information, so, um, and they are posted by law 48 hours before, uh, the, the meeting, so they will be online, um, Mondays, the Monday prior to our meetings. Um, and then just thank you to the library staff, this is to echo Bart Halle's, um, who have been part of outreach for visits to preschools, all the way to the retirement communities and everything in between. Um, we also have people go to concerts at the park and farmers markets. Um, and then I also just want to acknowledge, and this is something that you'll see in our board packets, um, how much the staff have been involved, not only in learning opportunities and continuing education, but also, um, they take all of their knowledge and they pass it on to other library staff, um, throughout the state and country, uh, by presenting in conferences. So it's a wonderful thing to see them be able to take everything they learn and, and share that information. Um, and then I did have a question that, for Julie, and, um, I noticed the stats, which are, are wonderful, and, and I like the way they're presented, um, I would be curious to see, um, 2023 programming comparisons. I didn't see that in the board packet, and would love to see if that is something we can have included in future reports. Uh, and I believe that's all I have. So we would be on to item number nine, the library director's report.
As for the Library Records Confidentiality Act complaints, I would direct everyone's attention to the statement that's posted on our FOIA tracker for the April 1st, 2024 FOIA request by, made by Mr. Noel Manley. Um, that statement was posted after the, uh, April 25th public access counselor's non-binding opinions were available, and had, and states that had those opinions been available, when we responded to his FOIA request on April 5th, we would have responded differently, uh, which is basically what the attorney general said in the letter that Mr. Manley then quoted back to us. Um, I have submitted a written report, and, uh, Mr. Breiner did leave out the fact that, as I told him after the, um, at the May meeting, that, um, because our, or at the April meeting, I knew I wasn't going to be able to speak, because our meeting was only going to be 45 minutes long. And so, for that reason, I made sure that I put in the board packet where also all of our incident reports are published, which Mr. Breiner frequently refers to, so I unfortunately made an assumption that he would read it, um, that I put in an apology, and I would read it once again. Um, it was read out loud by a member of the public who actually read the board packet, uh, for the April meeting, um, at the May meeting, so I didn't feel that I needed to read it again, but I would. "Apology to Ed Breiner, incident 864, originally incident 919. My sincere apologies to Mr. Ed Breiner for my statements regarding incident 840, 864, originally incident 919, occurring on December 9th, 19, or 2022. I was wrong in my statements on February 28th, 2024. An intoxicated individual did enter the two kids' room at approximately 3:30 PM on December 9th, 2022. Building operations monitor Daniel Barcoeak responded with the individual leaving quietly moments later. The Downers Grove Police Department was called after the individual exited the library to provide them information that the intoxicated of an individual was roaming the streets. My own lack of skill in searching our new incident tracking software and imperfect recall of the responsive documents for the January 2023, uh, FOIA request made by Mr. Breiner led to my erroneous statements. Because the 911 call was made in a follow-up comment, it was not listed as an infraction category, so none of my searches returned this result. A redacted copy of the incident report is attached. I was not personally involved in the incident and its resolution. My name appears on the responsive document from the January 23, 2023 FOIA request as the person who printed the report on January 23, 2023." So it's summer reading. We are super, super busy. Um, if you have not been in the children's department on a morning that we have programs, you have not been in the library lately. There are kids everywhere. We maxed out our teen volunteers at 95 volunteers. They are working, I know, they're great, and they are working our prize desks both in the children's department and in the adult department. Um, we are so glad to have them all here. Um, and I want to point out our new card registrations in May were up 28% from the previous May, and that's absolutely incredible, and that doesn't take into account that in June, we were having so many new card registrations that our circulation department started using the information desk, that the other desk where we normally have like surveys and stuff going on, um, started using that as a desk specifically for new card registrations, because they were causing such a backup at the regular checkout desk. So look for another big bump in new card registrations in June. Um, and we do have some sad news out of our children's services department. Our children's services outreach coordinator Erin Lindzen Meyer, that a lot of you may know, she goes to all the schools, preschools, and she's everywhere in this community. Um, she is unfortunately going for us, fortunately for her, going to be taking another position, um, and she will be leaving us. So that job is posted, and, uh, we're very, very sorry then to have her leaving us, but very happy for her. Um, and then I did also want to bring everyone's attention to some changes, um, in digital accessibility and compliance. Recently, there were changes to the Americans with Disabilities Act Title II that require digital accessibility compliance, um, and you can find out more information about this at railslibraries.org. They have a digital accessibility, um, topic page on their website. This new law is going to be a sea change, just like the original Americans with Disabilities Act was in 1990, when that implementation became a federal requirement and, and a lot of government entities were scrambling to become compliant. Um, this requires that all of your, um, electronic documents, your webpage, all of, um, the various services we offer online must be fully ADA compliant, which includes for everything. Every image has to have alt text, every table has to have screen reader information, every cell of every budget document in this board packet has to have its screen reader information, and we must be compliant with this law by January 1, 2026. So this is going to be a big, big job, and this goes for all schools and all libraries. So it is a huge undertaking for us, um, and we did not find out about that, uh, the, find out about the, that our date will not be, we thought our date was 2027, but because we are now over 50,000 residents in our district, it is 2026.
Can you repeat where in the, on the webpage that?
Oh, um, railslibrary.org. If you scroll toward the bottom of the page, they have their, um, like current issues pages, and digital accessibility is one of those current issues. Um, so I just wanted to bring your attention to that, and so you can, uh, there are some webinars, there is a Rails member update recording that is a good place to start, um, on that digital accessibility page, so, and that's all I have.
All right. Sorry, just making notes. All right, uh, we are on to item number 10, new business. Our first order of business is the architect presentation of the planning study.
All right. Um, so as you know, uh, yeah, we have our architects from Product Architecture, Dan Port and Tiffany Nash are here. And they are going to present, um, as those of you who have been following along with our, uh, strategic planning process, we have, is this thing not going on? Um, we have, uh, it, it doesn't want to, all right, um, we brought on, uh, Product Architecture to look at the items that were in our, uh, in the strategic plan that were regarding the building, and that is, uh, ADA accessibility from the parking lot side. So as some of you may know, if you have ever tried to enter this building as with someone who is a wheelchair user or someone with a stroller, you either have to carry them down or go all the way out to the public sidewalk and all the way back to the ADA entrance. So that's one of the things, um, acoustically separating the teens from the rest of the library, who knew teens needed their own enclosed space. Um, and then, uh...
Nursing, uh, nursing.
A sensory, a nursing room, and also a makery, so. Take it away!
Did you say there was a player that passed, or is it just the?
Oh, no, you just have to, sorry. Because we're just on the PDF of the board packet.
Hi, uh, my name is Dan Port, and it's my partner Tiffany. Uh, so about, I'd say six months, eight months ago, uh, we started a study working with the library staff and administration to look at, um, some of the items that Julie had just spoken about, trying to solve, um, A, first of all, issues as you're coming into the library, uh, the ramp that Julie spoke about is to come down the, um, off the ADA spaces and drop up at the front, actually have to come all the way out to this area here, come down all the way down the ramp that's quite long, and then into the, uh, lower level entrance into the lobby of the library. Um, second is, uh, on the main floor, we're actually looking for a sensory room that Julie spoke about and nursing room inside of youth, and then, um, we are going to look at issues for, uh, potentially moving the administration suite and the cafe, and that has to do with kind of, um, how we organize things upstairs also. Uh, on the second floor, um, teen is problematic as they...
It's a good text, it's like...
As teens go up the stairs after school, I think everybody's known who's been in the building, is they come upstairs and there, um, there's no separation besides the collection that's actually strategically placed between the teens here that are in this area and then more or less the remainder of the building. Um, so one idea or we're looking at is one to either enclose teen in its current position, or to look at other areas on the floor that might make more sense, uh, trying to get them up the stair and into a space a little bit quicker. We actually also looked at putting them on the first floor. So really the goal of the study was to really look at how many different configurations inside the existing footprint of the building and make sure we understand value, sort of where it makes the most sense to try to plan for, um, these spaces to be for the next couple of years. Um, as Julie spoke about, also, uh, we did look at introducing a makery or a maker space inside the library. Um, a couple of things that are super important to the current functional library is there's lots of conference rooms that actually work very well, uh, they're always full. Uh, the training lab is actually a really good, um, asset for the library. It has sort of a weird proportion, and we were trying to work on that also, um, and again, sort of the openness of teen and, uh, fixing sort of noise throughout the space. Scheme one. So, uh, we'll sort of look at these in different areas. So scheme one, what we looked at was actually entering the ramp. Um, one thing of, uh, kind of inclusionary... One thing of kind of inclusionary design is trying to make it so that when people come to the front door of the building, they have the same experience as people that are without disability. So as we come into the library off the parking lot, there's a landing to the ramp right next to the existing stair, and we have a small building addition that encloses that ramp so that people, when the weather's inclement, as it is for half the year in the Midwest, will come down the landing, land, come out of the ramp, and back in. And then what that does is take you from the top landing as you come out of the building and exits you at the bottom landing where everyone else is coming down the stair. It leaves this open gallery space. We've always been super fond about the galleries and the art that they show in these galleries and the art walls. I think it's a really beautiful way to end the library, so it was very important for Julie and staff to kind of keep that going as we, as we looked at the different configurations. This area on this plan actually stayed the same. We fixed some small things in the PR office by, currently, the manager can't get to our office without going out of her office into the workroom, so that's a very small thing that we fixed on this plan. Stay.
We added the vestibule at the top.
Yep, thank you. We actually extended the vestibule at the top also to make room for that landing so that the current doors are very heavy. We're actually looking at slider doors there also to, for ease of getting in and accessibility. We had two additional looks at the ramps here also. Again, we like to study things. This one was keeping the ramp outside, so we did one with a building addition enclosing it, one without a building addition, and then just coming down and not having to go so far out away from the building. The third one, which we had to look at because we're architects, was to see how long we would have to, how long the ramp would be if we pushed the entrance to the building as far of the parking lot as we could, and then just had a straight shot coming down into the vestibule, leaving the doors where they're at. It's very, very tight. It's not a very good experience. You lose a lot of that art wall that's inside the building and the stairs that are currently sort of wide and people can go up and down on both sides. It kind of compromises a little bit of that space. It shrinks the space outside the meeting room, so once you have lots of groups in here coming out, again, we just looked at it to make sure that we were kind of looking at all the different ways to do it. I'm not sure the staff and Julie felt like that was the best solution, but again, making sure we're looking at all the options.
So does that alternate one have like a cover over that ramp area?
We talked about it having a canopy over the top, yes. So if you see this dashed line here, thank you, actually, I forgot to say that. This dashed line here is the existing canopy that's there. We extended a layout over the top, so if it's pouring rain sideways, it's probably not the best, but it does provide some coverage for people using the ramp. On the second floor, on this scheme, what we actually looked at was actually enclosing teen, reconfiguring teen, but enclosing teen in the current space at the ramp. One issue that they have too is that the staff that supports the teen space is not with the teen space, so we actually wanted to move the staff on, with, to be with the open, the enclosed teen area. So here, we created a corridor down to the fire stair for exiting for the rest of the library. We have storage for teen, which you can't have enough storage in the library, an extra study room that would be for teen specifically, and then we have a teen workroom along the back of the space. Teens come in, here's the top of the stair, come directly into the space, there's always a person in there with them. Their collection is going to be in the room also. One important thing too is lots of libraries are now creating teen-specific program rooms that can be used throughout the day, but also as teens are in there. So if teens come back to school, there can be something set up for them to do, there can be a program going on that doesn't take away from the other programming spaces in the building. We looked at a flexible gallery space in the middle of the room. We actually, and then IT, adult computers, and the training lab, and the makerspace all kind of want to be in the same vicinity. It's kind of the same staff that support all four of those. So this idea, we kept the service desk where it's at, we kept IT the way it's at, we extended it out a little bit. Adult computers are reduced, there aren't as, as many people aren't requiring adult computers as there are when we designed it a few years ago. We extended out the existing conference room and added countertops and sinks to make it the makerspace. And then we extended the training lab out this way and this way a bit to create more storage and a little bit more accessibility down the path. We did actually also, Tiffany's giving me reminders with pointing us up. That's awesome. We actually currently, when you come into the training lab, it's the only way to get into the media labs, which I think the popularity of the media labs is suffering a little bit because of that. So we actually created a separate entrance in the media labs, again, centered around this sort of service IT desk, so as patrons come up, they can see where they're going and then make sure they're supporting them. We actually also looked at the adult service staff area. Currently, there's kind of an underutilized open space that's kind of furnished, kind of funny in this space, it's kind of a quiet area. Because magazines and some of the collections down here are shrinking, we actually made a super quiet space down in the back corner, which makes sense that it's kind of blocked by the collection in terms of noise traveling through. And again, the collection's kind of shrinking back here, so it's kind of, makes a lot of sense to have it back in that corner. And then we actually extended the offices and made more room for the workroom. Currently, they're kind of jammed in a corner and they don't have a lot of storage, that really solves that problem for them. And then you'll also see a potential social worker's office kind of floating around the space. In this instance, it's on the second floor, up in the back corner.
Are those walls, the, of the teen area, are they just like regular walls?
These are all glass, actually.
Glass walls?
Yeah. So in this one, we took the collection, pushed it to the back, and then as you walk past, you can see the teens. We sized it to have lots of different ways of seating. Upstairs is actually really nice that way. There's soft chairs, high chairs, high tops, so it just keeps the kind of excitement of the space, but it closes it to kind of keep some of the noise inside.
For the makerspace room, is it possible to kind of also take into consideration like soundproofing? Because that room has a really high ceiling. It's, I mean, even when you have like a small meeting, the voice, the noises.
Do you really echo?
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. Yep, that was one of the things that actually was one of the struggles of that room, so we'll work on that regardless, if it stays a conference room or turns into a maker's. Thank you, that's a great point.
This option, just make the maker a little bit bigger?
Yeah, just pulling it out, so the existing walls here. So you'll kind of notice in these schemes too, we did schemes that's kind of have at the least amount of construction possible, and then the last schemes get a little bit more ambitious, I would say. Well, the alternate scheme here was to actually extend the maker even more, leave the footprint of the training lab as it is and turn it, and then extend it down past a little bit this way, and then have the media lab there. Again, what that really does, it really does accept how much, how many people you want to have in the makerspace. So in this, we're looking at approximately twenty-four, or no, twelve, and in this one it's eighteen. So just working with the staff to see how big we can get that space to be.
One comment. We currently have two larger conference rooms, for want of a better term, on the second floor, and I think I see just one on this now, over in the far corner, the quiet room, since the maker space is replacing it.
Right, so I think the maker was looked at as a maker and also kind of a multipurpose room, so I think you'd be able to have meetings in there also, and the footprint being a little bit bigger would offer a little bit bigger groups.
Okay, I just want to point that out and make sure that.
Yeah.
And in addition, one of the reasons.
That needs up to, it will still meet the demand.
One of the reasons that we were looking at the training lab and kind of changing up the, the size of it would be to not have fixed computers in there, but rather go to more of a laptop training kind of scenario, so that that training lab could be used as another conference room.
Yeah, so, thank you. We're getting more flexible here.
Yeah, it's actually, it is more flexible.
And of course, laptops are replacing, replacing.
Yeah, and then we actually had two additional study rooms at the end of these also. Thank you. This addition, what we looked at, instead of running the ramp straight out, we actually looked to see what would happen if we did an addition that kind of kinked. And what that really does is kind of create space in the elbow, we'll call it. And we placed the café in that elbow, kind of, what, when you walk in the library, the gallery's very beautiful, but it takes you kind of a little bit of time to see people as you come in. So the idea was is that people would be hanging out in this area, it would really be active and kind of activate this entire corridor coming into the library. The second thing it does is creates additional space down here, and what you'll see is we kind of extended the admin space a bit, that's kind of fits very well. So then, the first thing is an addition there, so again, you come in, you split off and come back down the ramp. Second is, what we were able to do here then is put the HR manager here, an additional staff meeting room here, the social worker would be part of the admin suite. Relaying out the admin suite, when you come in today, it's kind of really cramped and backwards, you kind of come in and then turn back around to see people. And then we have the store, the server stays where it's at, additional storage, director, assistant director, and then PR office and manager in this area too. So we really kind of rearranged the admin suite and corrected it in terms of space planning, moved the café to the top, and then created a large, larger indoor space at the entrance to the library for that kind of inclusive ramp experience coming down into there.
This makes a staff conference room too.
Yes, right there, yep, new staff conference room also, perfect, thank you.
Okay, that would be interesting. Put down here.
I see that right?
Yeah.
So this one has less hanging pass parking spots, is that, am I, or is that just because of this?
It's just because, because you're actually able to share the spots, so, and the space between, so it actually has the same amount, I believe.
So, okay. I thought that the one that was the first version should have five spots or something.
I know there's the two.
Yeah, there was one, like that number thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Some short-term spots.
Right. Yeah, because those are the first, the short-term.
Yeah, so that one's not the handicap, but the.
It's, it's one of those fifteen-minute spots.
Okay.
And quite frankly, the shape of this is kind of awkward for dropping people off. So when we straightened it out, it kind of helped fix that kind of cars can line up more easily along the edge.
So that sidewalk would be?
It's all flush, actually.
Would be all flush?
All in the same level.
Okay, that, that.
And courtyard down in the middle is separate, so then we have benches lining the space waiting for people to get picked up.
Okay.
And a canopy covering that.
Obviously, that all fits within our property lines, I assume.
Yeah.
There's, you know, the parking lot where those handicap spots and so forth is not our land.
Yes, the village, that's right.
Okay.
And then all the schemes have this nursing room.
Well, Tiffany, thank you. Here. So these are the two restrooms in youth, and that's the nursing sensory room that we added in the youth area, and that's in every scheme. It's been a day since we've seen each other.
Another thing that, you know, if you were to do this, it just makes a nice spot for people to wait if people are in the meeting room.
Yeah.
Or wait to come into.
It contains like the sound factor in it too. Yeah.
Again, just really activating that entire gallery space from making the entire lobby activated, I think is really pretty.
Is the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is the, the ramp, for want of a better term, is, is that glass walled, or could it be or something like that?
Yeah, so we, our assumption would be the outside would be glass and the inside, the railing would follow you down. So as if the ramp got lower, the lower the wall would diminish and diminish. And then we also looked at a gallery wall here too, so we would just kind of study how high that wall would be to be both safe and provide additional gallery wall.
Yeah, and not confining that.
Not confining, light field, absolutely, absolutely light field. Okay. And then in this scheme, on the second floor, we actually flipped the teen so that when you, the teens exit the stair here.
Sorry.
They actually go directly into the teen space. So instead of having them come across and through the collections, we just, again, enclose the teen space there, have the training lab, and then we keep the corridor for the exiting as required by code. The teen workroom is inside there, we actually have a teen study room, and then we took the IT space, that's currently the IT stack, placed them down here with the makerspace again and the adult computers. Again, those always kind of want to be with each other in terms of who supports the programming in the spaces that they're in. So here we have the media lab, makerspace, IT and IT office, and then again, that same corridor linking the main library space back to the fire stair. We have a social worker here, we have a new study room here, reconfigure of the AV collection. On this side, we took the quiet room again and moved it out to the corner and then have additional space and storage space for the adult services staff. We did also create kind of a larger storage area. We've probably worked on a hundred and fifty libraries in our careers, and I think storage is the one thing that everybody needs more of, so we're always looking for spaces to create more of that in the plans.
And like on this scheme, this was downstairs, this could be a study room.
Yep.
Depending on what first floor, first floor scheme you choose.
They're kind of interchangeable. Perfect, thank you.
I'm sorry, I missed.
So then they're, you know, we're showing the social worker in different locations, they're all kind of mix and match, like this could be on the first floor who did that great ramp, or it could be a study room, like on this floor, if you put it somewhere, just an extra study room.
And the second alternate was combining sort of the teen and training and just keeping the study rooms on the edge, so taking the space and turning it into there, and then having the teen office or workroom in the back corner where IT is now teen programming, kind of that really tall span, which is really cool, and then having a teen collection on the side and wrapping the walls, teen study room, and then sort of seating throughout. This one we kind of liked differently than other ones because it kind of made niches within the room, it was a little, kind of a different kind of experience. This one is the same ramp that we showed you previously, but in this one, we actually, the staff had an idea to take teen and move it downstairs and to see what happens. So when they came in, instead of going through the library and upstairs, they actually just come in and go right to their space. The teen fits, it's tight, but it fits with the office and the workroom are kind of combined into one. Teen collection's in the space, there is a program room and a study room. They're a little bit smaller than they were upstairs, but the space does fit. Holds and copies get a little bit tight in terms of the, by the circ desk. This gets a little bit smaller as you walk in, but it kind of mimics the same hallway space as you're coming across. Again, we're really just looking at ideas about where teens are at the building and when they come in, how quickly we can get them into their space, and this was one way to solve it for sure.
How do I feel about that one?
What's that?
I'm like, I don't know how I feel about that one.
Yeah, no, no, it's funny. It's different, you know, it's, sometimes difference is good.
I almost still like the idea of teens just kind of like slipping into their little room right away, you know?
It's always stiff.
Accountability, like walk through the entire library first.
I like that. And then what that does is we can actually flip admin then up to the back top corner, so that really activates the rest of the space here and kind of gets rid of one of those kind of, not dead corners, but sort of corners off the, off the beaten path. Director, assistant director, PR in the manager's office, HR is here, and then admin suite kind of opens up here too, and the social worker then is located directly outside the admin suite, kind of what we did downstairs. Up top is, again, that sort of trifecta of the IT workroom, the makerspace, and the training lab with the adult computers sitting over there, with, again, breaking out the media lab so it's separate. We have this flexible, flexible gallery space throughout, and then again, the AV collection, the good thing about having the AV collection kind of here is that AV collections are probably going to start to diminish over the next couple of years, so once this is sort of gone, we can either add more study rooms and/or sort of activate that space again. So we're sort of planning, I think this plan takes into account that at some point the AV collection will be less.
Yep, that's where we are, and we just wanted to hear from you.
Oh, this is the old admin upstairs.
Yeah, yeah.
We haven't started doing a cost estimate yet, but we can price the sound chunks so you can do this in pieces, so I just wanted to hear what you like, what you don't like.
I had a strong opinion about things.
To remind everybody that these were actually developed and drawn before we had the presentation and before we had the idea of possibly bringing a full-time social worker onto the library staff. The original idea was that the social work office would be for the social work interns. Because they are doing direct client services now, what we're finding is that they need a private space in order to provide those services, and very often, our study rooms are full of people already, and so we were looking at ways to provide a small private office for those social work interns. So this does not in any way assume a social worker on staff. Just wanted to make that abundantly clear.
And as Tiffany was talking about, the cost estimates, we worked with Shale's, the same construction manager that's been doing all the projects at the library for the last ten years, we worked together with them on many, many library projects, so once you guys give us the approval to have them priced, we'll get them, that estimate's done, and then, again, there's, we can pick and piece and base them as you wish.
I think I'm of the opinion that I prefer to see admin remain on the first floor and teens and makerspace be on the same floor, just because, you know, the goal of the makerspace is really to, you know, obviously be for everyone, but you know, I would love to see, you know, more teen programming, so I like that idea, and I think I like, you know, to. So I like that idea, and I think I like, you know, in terms of cost effectiveness, I would imagine keeping it in that same corner is probably the most sense.
It is.
But, you know, and the accessibility is huge. I did a training on accessibility equity. So, you know, for them to have the same experience and enter the same way safely and not have to go all the way to a public street and back. You know, I think I was drawn to the one with the cafe in the middle, because that also takes, gives the admin more, you know, space in that area, and it also makes sense to kind of take what's generally a little bit of a noisier part of the library and kind of contain it in that little bend there, so.
Agreed, thank you.
I agree with, I like the admin being on the first floor as well. I think it also sets a sort of precedent that the admin is accessible a little bit more. I think when they're tucked away in the back corner, it feels a little bit something.
Yeah, not as much.
Yeah, just a little bit removed and a little bit like, I mean, and I mean, already, I mean, I think our admin are, you know, they're behind the door that has to be buzzed into, and that already could set up a feeling of sort of like they're kind of removed. And then this would be like an addition to that, like all the way upstairs in the back corner. It does sound like that feels.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
I share that idea. I'm curious to know how admin feels about that. Any opinions from our staff, because you're the professionals.
I can tell you why, I think, why I was the one who suggested the teen downstairs. In a couple of years, District Fifty-Eight, the sixth graders are going to be all in the middle schools, so the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Right now, the kids' room department serves kindergarten through eighth grade, teens serve seventh through twelve. We feel that if we could get them on the first floor, it'd be a more seamless transition from the kids' room to the teen room. We'd also save space on collections. Right now, we double buy middle school materials for the kids' room and the teen department. So we would make adjustments to our collection development to not have to double buy those materials anymore. We also share a variety of programming supplies, programmers at the moment, and things like that too. So that was my idea, but that's why, I just happen to be here, I can tell you why. That was why, but I also, I also like those other upstairs ones too. But that's why we present that part.
So it's more of a, it's more of a keeping the kids, no matter their age, in the same sort of general area.
And allows for back and forth. Teens go back and forth a lot now. Especially now we have that tween area, they go up, they come down, they go up, and they come down. Sometimes they're being followed, which is the reason, yeah, this, well, too. Right, which is the reason for this scheme too, because they just get up faster.
Yep.
It's probably less important, but I'm curious to know, do you have any sketches or ideas about the exterior elevation of the?
You know, we kept it really 2D planning. We kind of got excited, and we just wanted to kind of make sure you guys saw the plans before we did too much.
Yeah.
I think we look at it, we're actually really excited to look at it too from the outside and see how that glass piece feels on the front.
Yeah.
For sure.
That sort of wedge shape on the back, I'm curious to know.
Yeah, I think it'll look great, but no, for sure. I think we'll get the pricing done, and then we can see what it looks like, for sure.
My reaction to the changes on the accessibility is right now, most buildings, the parking lot is the front, you go through the front door. And right now, our parking lot feels like you're coming through the back door. And this really creates more welcome, it's almost like having two front doors.
Yeah. The whole problem is we're, the land's not flat.
Yeah.
The south end of the building is a lot lower. The south end of the site is a lot lower than that.
Yeah, I think it's like five foot six. That's why we have two landings. You can go five feet with one landing, and we had to do just, just the second landing to make it accessible.
Any question? So that, one of the options, move the teens to the north side of the second floor? Does that then take that conference room that has bad acoustics and make that part of the teen room?
It actually, we can fix the acoustics. So there's lots of ways to fix the acoustics. Okay. It did make, in one of the schemes, it made it a programming room, and the other room is just kind of open, but they're both enclosed by glass. So right now, this one is enclosed, so we really have to work on that one in terms of acoustics. And this one, by releasing the sound on two sides of the walls, you would actually let, you'd get less reverb and more bleed, and it wouldn't be as bad. We'd still address the issue, but yes, so it does make a lot of space louder, potentially. But we will put dollars into the budget to make sure that we have acoustics for that. Good?
Yeah, let me see, okay. Yeah, that conference room currently is at the north end of the spine.
Yeah.
And it's a much higher ceiling.
Yes.
Here, you'd have to at least lower part of the ceiling.
It's a cool space, yeah, it really is. I think it's, there's a lot of.
It's an attractive space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Functional.
Sort of functional.
It's, it's got some funny walls in there. So again, with your approval, which sounds like we have, we'll move on to pricing. And then that should take a bottom maybe a bit more, but they're kind of busy right now. And then we'll report back to you guys after that, to see where we're at.
Yeah, I think it's exciting, and it's implementing our strategic plan with a certain accessibility as well as other functions.
Yeah, the staff was amazing. They worked, I mean, we worked together for months on this, and it turned out really well. It was great.
Julie, I have a really quick question. The furniture that we purchased a few years ago, I don't remember where that was. That same, we're going to be having to add a lot more furniture for some of these spaces. Kind of like that, like the desks that have the plug-in.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We did not, the tables in the teen area were actually not replaced. It was all the tables throughout the adult areas upstairs.
Okay.
So, the, currently in the teen space, the ones that have power and data in them are all the tall ones, and then along the curved bar has power, but none of the mobile tables in the teen area.
I mean, I, we're going to get the pricing for all of these different schemes, but I'm also thinking about the pricing for furnishing all of these spaces.
Yeah, we include all that.
Some of these spaces are beautiful, but they're going to, you know.
Yeah, and we'll include that in the pricing also.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do the furniture side and the construction side. Great question, thank you. Okay. Thank you guys so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Well, we are going to be this way for the budget, but we have two agenda items in between.
Right, totally.
However you want to do it.
It doesn't really matter.
Use the extra room.
All right, we are on to item B of new business, the bylaws update.
This is really a couple things, clarification, and also there were some new AG and court opinions that have come down that affect the way trustees and other public officials operate. And there's nothing really too substantive. I didn't want to add, though, there's a legal concept called floor and ceiling, which means that whatever a statute says creates the minimum standards for something. There's nothing that says that a public agency bylaws or operating procedures can't go beyond what the law requires. As long as you're not violating the law, you can impose additional rules and standards for your agency. But because this really is in response to some recent AG Attorney General opinions, we are presenting it as a technical change. Our bylaws allow us to make changes in response to legal requirements without as much of a formal process.
Yeah, I mean, seems like the changes are not particularly substantive, and I mean, a lot of it's just fixing the tense of it as well.
Yeah, a couple of grammatical syntax things.
Could you just, I'm sorry, go over what is actually changed? It wasn't immediately clear to me looking at the two.
Yeah, it's really the, most of it is in Article Four, Section Two C, with the conflicts of interest and use of social media. Just to make some clarifications on what our responsibilities are.
Is that it?
The law actually, the law, the AG opinion, actually has changed in the last month or so. Always been behind social media trends by about five years. So that's... And there were a couple of other things that just needed to be cleaned up a little.
Do we have a motion?
Well, we can put a motion on the floor and then talk about it some more.
Yeah, of course.
Well, I move that we update the bylaws as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second to sleep the bylaws as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second, and yes, we can absolutely continue discussion.
Is there, just a technical, procedural question? Is there a requirement under the law that we need to fulfill by approving this tonight? Or if you had further items we wanted to talk about, we could?
I mean, we certainly don't.
I'm not saying, saying that it would be necessary. This is all pretty complex.
Yeah, the way it's presented now, we could act on it tonight if you want. If there are other, if there are other more substantive bylaws changes that we need to make down the line that would, you know, really make actual procedural changes or, you know, and then those require further discussion and a...
This is sort of codifying practice here.
Yeah, yeah, and clarifying some of the language on it.
I like it.
But in the last...
But I'm not a lawyer.
Month or so, the AG's office also came down with an opinion about what we need to do to differentiate, speaking as a trustee, from personal opinion on social media. This catches up with that.
Any other comments or questions? Well, then, let's go ahead and vote. Can we, let's do a roll call vote, I'm sure.
May I have your attention please? The library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please bring the items you wish to check out to the subjects or the first floor service desk at this time. Again, the library will be closing in fifteen minutes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Condey?
Yes.
Trustee Sladek?
Yes.
Trustee Topic?
I'm going to state.
Okay, and President Gagaki? Yes. All right, the bylaws update has been passed.
Thank you, Maurice.
Yes, thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
Item C of new business is the Illinois Non-Resident Library Card Program Participation.
This is an annual decision that the board makes to participate in the Non-Resident Fee Card Program in the state of Illinois that allows the library to sell library cards to non-residents, those who are unserved for library service, who reside within an area that is also served by a school district, served by our library. So, they make it so you can't just shop libraries. Your non-resident card needs to come from where your school is. And if a district serves multiple, is served by multiple libraries, then you get your choice on those. Anyway, all of our non-resident areas are within District Fifty-Eight. And one of the new provisions of this law is the waiver of fees for children under the age of eighteen, which is how we are doing our Student Library Card Program with District Fifty-Eight, which will allow us to give library cards to all of those non-resident students in District Fifty-Eight. And as you who have been following along with us may remember, we were part of the District Fifty-Eight registration packet, and parents could opt in to get their children library cards. So we need to opt in to the fee to participate in the Non-Resident Fee Card. We need to choose the, choose the method of calculation, which we use the general mathematical formula and have for a long time. And then, compute that fee, make the effective starting date, and do the waiver for non-resident student cards. So, the general mathematical formula for this year is $293, which is a $2 increase from the previous year. We generally do it effective August one. That gives us enough time for, to get that onto the website and get all the staff trained and knowing that there's a new fee, et cetera.
You said that you expected that number to go down, the number of participants, because children are getting the...
We may have fewer people buying a non-resident fee card because their children will have cards through District Fifty-Eight. We do anticipate there may be that impact.
This is something that we have done every year that I've been a member of this board, which is quite a long time. And it's just a means of allowing people who do not live within a library service area to buy a library card, in effect, and pay the same thing that the, on average, that the residents of the district are paying. So, and I think it's, I think it's a great service, and I move that we adopt this change, increase to $2.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to adopt the Illinois Non-Resident Library Card Program Participation and the calculated fee. Do we need a roll call vote for this? If it's contrary, just a voice vote, it's fine.
You can do a voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and all those abstaining. All right, so we have passed the Illinois Non-Resident Library Card Program Participation. Next up is the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2025.
All right, now we're going back. I'm doing some introductory things first, so I hope everybody has had a chance to look at the board packet that is posted online. There are some explanations and some budget basics that are included in that. There are some explanations and some budget basics that are included in that packet and an explanation of the process and our timing and why we do it this way. We, our budget is due to the Village of Downers Grove by August thirty-first. And so generally what we do is I present a preliminary budget here in June. We, we get some feedback from the Board of Trustees and begin the process. We do a second draft in July, tightening up our numbers, including different things. Sometimes, for example, this month, we have both with and without a social worker. So there's an expense budget, expenditures both ways. So next month, depending on what the board directs this time, we may or may not see both of those come back again. In past years, we have had different revenue budgets where we have looked at the tax levy at different rates so that we can look at those in June and July and have that final draft for the board in the August board packet. Because our board meetings are the fourth Wednesday of every month, we're usually right before the August thirty-first deadline. So do take a look. And we do have a few things that are different this year in our budget process.
Could you make it larger so you can a little bit more? Awesome, thank you.
So this is the first year that we are using a completely new internal process. The Village of Downers Grove recently began using a new budgeting finance software called Munis. And this is our first year completely utilizing their budget planning module within Munis. And so I and our entire management team are doing all of our budget planning and initial input directly into the Munis finance software. In past years, we would do it, do our own Excel budget, then put it into Munis, and then the village would have to get it back out. And it, it was just too much back and forth. So we're, we're trying something new this year. It's, it's going pretty well. It did take us a little while, a little longer than expected, to figure out all of the ins and outs of that. And in particular, I did not get a chance to work on the 2024 estimated actuals. So our estimates were where we're going to end the 2024 budget year, partially because I couldn't figure out where to do it and the village finance vote didn't get back to me. And then we finally figured out where it was and how to do it. So it's going to come for July, I promise. But the, the thing that makes that really important is that over the last seven years, this board has very purposely used fund, library fund balance from a previous, unexpendited balance from a previous year to try to lower their tax levy while continuing to make the transfers into the Library Capital Replacement Fund. And so that utilization of fund balance is something that we have done every year for the last seven years. But we need a better sense of what that fund balance is going to be, and that's why those year-end estimates are so important.
May I have your attention?
Also.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please bring the items you wish to check out to the self-checks or the first floor service desk at this time. Again, the library will be closing in five minutes.
Our H R source, which is the Employer Association for H R that we participated and that we work with for our market benchmarking and salary schedule, they have not yet released their cost of living for 2025. So we are, that is why normally in May or June, you guys are looking at our salary schedule and approving the salary schedule for 2025 so that we can incorporate that into the budget. Unfortunately, we don't have that number yet. So we are working with a three percent across the board, trying to guesstimate where that's going to wind up. They have told us it's supposed to be available by the end of June. Just off and gone. So. So, and as you can see here on the 2023, you can see what we budgeted. So we had budgeted to use almost $600,000 of fund balance in 2023. When we got to year end, you can see that we only wound up using about $160,000. So that's where that estimate of what we're going to have left in the fund balance is so important because we very often come in under budget fairly significantly. And there are a couple of reasons for that that we'll go through as we go through the expenditures budget. All right, so this is a breakdown of our revenues. The, we only have one revenue draft going right now that is at a three percent levy increase, which is our seven-year average of levy increases is about three percent. We are using an estimate of four percent for the equalized assessed valuation of all property in the district that is based on a five-year average and our consultation with the Village of Downers Grove. That is the number that the Finance Department will be using in the village's budget estimates. Please remember that your library, like all libraries in the state of Illinois, is primarily property tax funded. And when I say that, that doesn't mean 51%. That means 96%. And that is fairly typical of libraries in Illinois. You're generally between 94% and 97% property tax funded, depending on the library itself and what type of library it is. We, so other than property taxes, we get about 2% of our revenue from the personal property replacement tax, about 1% from the state's Illinois Public Library Per-Cabinet Grant, and then all other sources combined are about 1%. Unfortunately for us, at this time, the P P R T, our secondary source of income, is expected to drop by approximately 28%. Personal property replacement tax is complicated. And I invite you to go to the, to illinois.gov and, and read all about personal property replacement tax because it, it's interesting. And, and complicated and very hard to predict. And so we're always waiting for the state of Illinois to put out their next round of budget numbers. And this is what we just found out as I was finishing up this draft for you all, was that steep drop. Now, some of you may remember that a couple of years ago, we had a really steep, we had a really great, great increase in it. And so now we're, we're seeing a drop, and it is what it is. Let's see. So as you can see, we're looking at a 3% increase for property taxes, that decrease here in personal property replacement tax. And then we always try to do very conservative estimates on all of our other income lines. And then when you get to, if you're following along on your, on your own computer, this is page seventy-three in the packet. This shows that 3% increase in the levy and what that does using a 4% E A V, what that would do to our tax rate. As you know, the tax levy and the E A V are inverse on how they affect the tax rate. So the, the difference between the two usually comes out to what the tax rate has done. And then on page seventy-four, we have, this is the impact on taxpayer. This is with a median home value. We did update our median home value according to American Fact Finder, census.gov, with a 2022 median home value of $425,000. So that is an increase in the median home value in our, in our village. As you can see, this is what a, the total, someone in a median home value would be paying. We also calculate that by $100,000 of home value. That's just designed to make it easier for you as a taxpayer to kind of get an idea of what that would be for an impact for you personally, depending on what your home is valued at. And then I have also included in the packets this rate levy and E A V history. It's the past five years plus what we're estimating for this year. So you can see what, what our tax rate has done over the last five years and what we estimate it to do in 2025 based on our current projections, what our levy has done over the past five years, and then our E A V base and what, what's been happening there, as well as that per hundred thousand dollars of home value. As you can see, we have been coming down. It's, it's bounced a little bit, but a fair, fair downward trend since 2020. And then on page seventy-six, we get to, serving our public standards for Illinois Public Libraries has a, does a comparison according to the Illinois Public Library Annual Report. And so it has us looking at what are the, what are, what that percentage analysis is statewide. So comparing ourselves to the statewide average in salaries, benefits, salaries and benefits combined, print materials, electronic materials, other materials, and then our total and all other expenditures combined. So as you can see, we do spend more than the statewide average on salaries and benefits. That is not unusual for libraries in the Chicago, in the suburban Chicago area because we do pay more than the downstate libraries. And then our print materials and our all other expenditures does tend to be lower. We do tend to spend more than the statewide average on materials. And as we go down.
Is some of that variance with the all other expenditures the comment agreement?
And, and as a city library, because we are part of the village's franchise agreement for electricity, we do not pay for electricity. And therefore, our overhead cost, that all other, is significantly lower because that is for a lot of libraries, particularly library districts, electricity is a very large part of their non-personnel budget lines. And so you can see about 72% in staff and salaries and benefits, about 16% in all other, all other expenditures. And then our materials, we've got about 5% each for electronic, for print, and then about 2% in other materials. And on the revenue side, oops, no, sorry. There we go. On the revenue side, as you can see, 96% property taxes, 2% personal property, 1% grants, and then everything else combined coming up to 1%. All right, so that's the revenue side. On the expenditures, we have two different expenditures budgets presented. Both contain all of the management team's budget requests and all of our anticipated 2025 work plan items. I remind you, we will have a draft of the 2025 work plan, strategic plan items for you at our next meeting. The management team is currently working diligently on that as well as a review of where we are to date in the 2024 work plan. A lot of the 2025 work plan items will be extensions or the next step in things that we've already been doing here in 2024. For example, the building study and the cost estimating are in the 2024 budget. Doing, working with a financial consultant on how to finance whichever options you all think you might pursue would be in the 2025 budget. So the next planning steps. And those, those are in the professional services line. That's where all of our consulting fees come from. And of, of these two expenditures budgets, the only difference is whether or not we include the social worker. And Mrs. Breiner mentioned the cost of insurance with a social worker. The library package that we have through our Lyra Consortium, that is the insurance pool for libraries in Illinois, does include the coverages that we need for a social worker. Libraries like the Oak Park Library are members of Lyra and already have social workers on staff. So we do already have members who are doing that, and so we are covered there. Our coverage with Lyra is very robust. It also includes things like cybercrime and volunteer accident. And it, it's a really robust package that's designed for public libraries specifically. All right, so here we are in the no social worker expenditures budget. This is the simplified version, so this brings all of the departments together. As you can see, this puts us at about 2.5% for salaries and benefits. That, we have had some significant retirements and some attrition. We also have six of our full-time staff members do decline our employee health insurance currently. And so that has helped to bring that health insurance cost down. However, we must be cautious when we're looking at this because if we have employee turnover, someone else could elect a very different level, and that, that would impact our budget significantly. We do offer, our employee benefits are at the same levels. Several years ago, we voted to put them at the same levels as the Village of Downers Grove. So the employer and employee cost mirrors the Village of Downers Grove and what they do with their employer and employee cost. We did implement that a number of years ago. And we do participate in that group, that employer group with the Village and Park District. We do not get the actual renewal rates for those employee benefits until October. So this is based on a 10% increase. We hope that it will be no more than that amount. But we do include a fairly significant renewal rate for that. We also include a significant renewal rate for the Lyra insurance pool. That is our other insurances in the non-personnel lines, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So here we are, and, and then this is the non-personnel side. We do have.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
Because we were talking about health insurance. I'm looking at page fifty-nine, and I'm seeing that the number for health insurance actually goes down in 2025?
Yes.
Am I reading that correctly?
Yep, that's because we have multiple employees who are. We've had turnover in employees who were taking a more significant benefit level who are no longer that. Who are no longer that, that the person in the position.
Yeah.
Is opting out. And so that, and remember, because we pay a significant amount of family health coverage, the swing for an employee can be, even if they take just single, that can be about seventy-five hundred a year. Or if they elect family, it can be twenty-two thousand. So one person changing their circumstance or changing their job can be a fairly significant swing for our budget when you think about the fact that overall, this budget shows an increase of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. That's all salaries and benefits, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But one employee change could swing us by almost twenty thousand dollars. So that, that's one of the reasons that, that the health insurance line is always the one that gives me a little bit of agenda.
So that 2025 is taking into consideration the 10% increase plus the fact that those employees come in.
Thank you. It, it's reflecting all current benefit elections.
Yeah.
So the non, the non-personnel side, we are looking at a 1.7% increase total. We've got some things that are kind of moving all over the place here, so I wanted to explain a few of them. For fifty-three forty-six, which is data processing services, we're actually moving the sorter, the automated materials handling annual service contract from data processing services down to fifty-four seventy, which is other, other equipment repair and maintenance. And that's where all other maintenance contracts live. And so it's just bringing it into line. So you see the one line going down significantly, the other line going up significantly, just from moving that one annual cost. Our supplies, our commodities are getting more expensive. As you can see, we brought special legal to try to accommodate for what we have been spending the last couple of years. And then the advertising and PR, they are moving some money within their department budget for postage and printing, so you can look at that in the budget detail. And then, of course, there's cleaning services. If you've been following along what's been going on with our cleaning contracts, unfortunately, we had a contract that had been, a three-year contract that had been underbid and had, unfortunately, that contractor decided to part ways with us rather suddenly at the beginning of the year, and we found that the market rate was considerably more than we had been paying. And so we are bringing the budget back in line with what we are actually paying for cleaning services. Overall, this makes a 2.3% increase to expenditures in this, in the version with no social worker.
I did also have a question on the building maintenance services.
Sure.
It looks like, so our 2024 estimates are, what, like almost half of what the original budgeted amount was? So I was curious about that and maybe why we weren't able to lower our estimate for 2025 more.
Oh, that's the estimated attainment, that's what I haven't worked on at all.
Okay.
Sorry, that, I had the 2024 estimates, we, I unfortunately did not have the time to get in with all of our MUNIS changes.
Yeah.
And get that in, but that I have promised you and myself and all of them that I will get to that.
Okay.
Before July.
All right.
And then we have the draft with the social worker position. And so as you can see, that takes us up to 3.9% increase in the personnel lines. And that is with an estimate of what their health insurance elections would be. As you can see, it's about a sixty-three thousand dollar swing in the total proposed change to personnel lines.
Can you remind me what the percentage was without the percentage change?
It was 2.5% without. So it's about one, it's almost one and a half percent just for that one position. And overall, again, all of the rest of the non-personnel lines are the same, and overall, that brings us up to a 3.3%, so about 1% in the total budget increase if we chose to do.
When the social work interns gave their presentation, there was some conversation about looking into grants if we were to continue the social work program. Is there any progress on that?
Jen, would you like to talk about grants to get a, for a social worker?
So.
Jen, it's our grant.
I just submitted a letter of intent to the Christopher Family Foundation for a grant for a social worker. That deadline is July 12th, and at that point, they will review the letters of intent that they have received, and then they will invite those to fill out an application for the formal grant. I'm also looking at a Blue Cross Blue Shield grant that is open July 1st. I haven't seen it yet. And then we can apply for, we could potentially apply for a DuPage Foundation grant for next year, but we missed that cycle. So those are the three that I'm going to write down.
These would be one year?
Yes.
Thank you.
How optimistic should we be?
I'm always optimistic. You don't want to. Yeah, we're gonna do it. Yeah, we're gonna do it.
Do you know what the amounts would be, if, if successful, what would be the size?
So I did request the, the minimum for the social, for the letter of intent for the Christopher Family Foundation, I did request the minimum. And that was forty-eight, because I think the range was forty-eight to, I don't, I don't recall what the range was, but I, I did request the minimum, so.
So forty-eight thousand?
Yes.
And the cost, if I'm hearing right, would be about sixty-three thousand?
Yeah. And currently, our Downers Grove Public Library Foundation pays the stipend for the social work interns, but they were really hoping that we could add the, a social worker. And they also pay the additional amount for the clinical supervisor that allows our social work interns to do direct services. We, we've talked to the foundation about the idea of continuing to fund at least one social work intern, even if we bring a full-time social worker on to the library staff, or even just to maybe partially fund a, a stipend so that that social worker would, would have an intern to help them out. So. And then, as you can see, when you get to the standards for, in the standards comparison with the social worker, it actually does not move the needle on our percentages very much at all. We are still at a rounded seventy-two percent for salaries and benefits. So we're, we're right in the same, same vicinity there. I do want to say that the ADA Title II compliance that we were talking about earlier and the ongoing compliance with that mandate, that not only includes, as I said, it's not only our website and all of our digital services, it's also every internal document that we have would also have the requirement to have alt text, to have screen reader capability. And so we are, at this time, we estimate that that would be a very time-consuming process. So we found out that this board packet was actually the first document that our marketing and communications team and Caitlin were working on making ADA compliant with the alt text for all images and all tables, and it has taken hours and hours of work. So I anticipate that we may be bringing you another part-time position in the July budget expenditures that would be someone in the marketing communications department that would be our internal person who would be in charge of ADA Title II compliance, initially getting us going on the webpage, et cetera, and then ongoing to do that for all of our social media, all of the documents going out to our website, and making sure that all of our internal documents are also compliant. So that's kind of the bad news for the July budget. So we'll, we'll be seeing how that goes.
Major unfund.
Yeah, yeah, well, and.
Is there any chance the Secretary of State's gonna include anything to help with that?
At this.
State librarian?
At this point, we're not expecting anything. However, one of our, member of our management team was remarking on things like the Real ID, and when they first put that out, they said it was going to be mandatory by X date, and X date became Y date, and Y date became Z date. So there is still a chance, but at this point, we really need to be, let's start, yeah. We need to be working toward full compliance by January 1, 2026. And so at this time, we are putting that on our 2025 strategic work plan. As you know, accessibility is one of our major work plan items, and so this is an extension of yet another strategic planning goal to continue to be, to exceed ADA compliance and to meet all of those standards. So we're, we're bringing that to you in July. And then the last bit that I had was, the library, there, okay, the library capital replacement fund. As you know, this is funded by transfers from the library fund and interest. That's the only money that ever goes in there. We generally move an amount after we get the audit from the village every year, and we get that final budget, or that final amount from what we expended last year. Then we vote to make that transfer. That will be out of your agenda next month. And each of those, each project year is listed in our 2017 to 2022 Capital Needs Assessment that was done back in 2017, and we went through the whole process on how to fund it. And we have done more than 3.2 million dollars in projects under the capital replacement plan in the last seven years. That has included HVAC, our controls, the rooftop units, the boilers. We have done, we have gone to LED lighting throughout the building, occupancy sensors, the VAV boxes. We have done some, some things with the windows, masonry, tuck pointing. The roof was a huge part of this. And we have been able to do all of those projects without any bonded indebtedness, and with a goal of ending at 2027, once we get through those projects, still having a million dollars in the library capital replacement fund. We're still on target for that. There is one large ticket item remaining on the Capital Needs Assessment, and that is the flooring, happy carpet. However, because we're looking at this big project, we don't want to do flooring right before we possibly do construction. So we are looking at pushing that carpet replacement off to 2026 with the idea that it would be incorporated into the larger project should the library pursue a larger building project, and if not, we just do the carpet replacement. So the number you see here for 2025 is a relatively small number because this is things like architectural steel and soffits and some more VAV boxes. VAV boxes, for those who aren't into how public buildings work, that is a variable air valve, and it is the ones that are up in the ceiling and they control the heat and the hot and cold air that's going through the building. And all of ours are mechanical, and we are switching them out to the digital ones that actually are Wi-Fi enabled, so they speak directly to the control system. The mechanical ones are actually daisy chained, physically wired, and so if you lose one in the daisy chain, you lose all the ones past it. So we have slowly been replacing those, and that's part of the Capital Needs Assessment.
I'm sure there are probably people in the audience that have no idea what this capital replacement fund is, and it's way too complicated to talk about here, but if you have questions about it, talk to us off-line, and we'll, we'll try and, I, I try to relate it. If you've ever lived in a condominium, it's a reserve fund. Basically a reserve fund, so that if you have, when it comes time to replace the roof, instead of having to go out for a bond issue to get the money to buy the new roof, you put a little bit into the fund each year, so by the time you need the new roof, you've got the money for it. And you smooth out that. Some years you get more capital, some years you have less capital, but you make contributions fairly evenly, so when the money is needed, it's there. I don't know whether that helps at all or not, but.
And, and in the board packet, there is an explanation of the history of the library capital replacement plan.
So we don't need a special assessment?
We do not want any special assessments. So is there anything that the board would like to see in, do you want to continue to see the budget both with the social worker and without the social worker? Do you want to see different levy amounts as well? It gets more complicated. I will warn you that using the MUNIS system, it's harder to do all the different iterations than it was in an Excel spreadsheet.
I have two. One is if we can add that part-time position with the.
Oh.
Also, I'm, I know that maybe Sotter brought this up, but, but with this ADA compliance, which we need to obviously to do, and it's very important, I, I want to see like, what does that look like within some of these other outline items, like interpurchase materials? Like, do you know any like screen readers do we need? What are the other things that we need to do to become ADA compliant within the budget? That are not, that don't just include in the actual book, but other things? So I know generally in June, we kind of give you feedback on the scenarios of levy we want to see, but, and I guess it's a question I'm posing to the trustees, like, is it possible for us to push that to July? To decide, like, to, to give her feedback on levies? Because I know we're missing like, you know, the part-time position, and, you know, is that something we can potentially, you know, re-review what you've given us, but with the part-time position in, and with some of those, you know, a little bit more solidified numbers pending whatever information you get in the next month, and then come back to you and review those scenarios in August? Do we feel like that's something we could do and then also vote in August? Does that, are you, I don't know if that's.
No, I, yeah.
Well.
From, from just how MUNIS works, it's easier to do iterations on the expenditure side or. or on the revenue side, not both.
Yeah.
At the same time. But, you know, we can make it work.
Okay.
Well, my, you know, I'll speak of my personal wish. I'm hoping that we can find a way to add the social work. Very strong feel, I feel that we got quite a bit of input on the, during the strategic planning process. This is something that a lot of people in the community would like to see us do. It's, even though there are social work titles on, at county and municipal level, they're not meeting our needs. And, so I'm personally not ready to pull it up yet.
No, I wasn't saying to pull that. I want to see it along with the part-time position. I want to.
Oh, yeah, I want to add the part-time.
Because that's, that's a different, that changes the numbers again. So I feel like we need to see it with that part-time position, without, and then with. Because we have to, we have to do the ADA.
We have to do the ADA.
So I, I want to see it both.
Based on what the presentation about the social work program was a couple of months ago, I think we also need to be aware that having a social worker does connect to the community concerns about the security and safety issues that are perceived in the library. Because having someone who's really trained to deal with someone who is in a disruptive situation or a crisis situation, I think, may, first of all, you don't have to call the police as often for something that could be handled internally by someone who really knows how to do it. But also perhaps able to identify problems before they become, you know, something that you do have to call the police on. If a social worker is sitting there and becomes acquainted with, you know, the regulars and the kind of issues, I think over, over time, that does address some of those other issues that don't seem to be connected that really are.
I think it definitely will.
Yeah, I think, and I apologize to back to everybody. But, you know, I think for anyone that wasn't at the May meeting, the social work interns gave a great presentation. And there was very much a demonstrated need in just the number of interactions they have. And they've helped the building monitors, you know, diffuse situations because they have established relationships with a lot of the members of the community and are able to get, you know, those immediate needs, like somewhere to get a meal that night or, you know, a place to get some clean clothes. And so I think it does lend itself to the security issues or, you know, the perceived mental health issues. So I think that's why having a social work, a social worker in-house versus sending them all the way up to Wheaton, assuming they could even get there, I think is important and has been demonstrated.
And this is not just affecting us, this is affecting all public service organizations. We've been hearing a lot over the, at the national level, about nine-one-one calls. Don't always send a cop. Sometimes you send a social worker instead of a cop. Or sometimes you send both. Because long-term, it's both cheaper and more effective because you, you, you lower the incident rate. And I think in our building, that would definitely be the case. We get repeat offenders, and we are a public library. We can't bolt the doors and not let them in. We're a public library, but we might be able to offer them some services of this sort that would reduce the incident rate.
We will have a, more for you in July. And I'm really hoping that by getting that, the estimated attainment for two thousand and twenty-four firmed up, that will help us get a better handle on where we are in the levy need.
When, when do you think you'll get that information?
I, I.
I mean, we.
For, for the July.
For July being.
For the July draft.
Not, not before, not much before. No, thank you.
We'll see.
You answered.
You get a few weeks off, Dave. Just enjoy July, the fourth and the fifth.
Not gonna make promises you can't keep.
No.
Not at this point. And especially with not having the cost of living increase from HR source yet either. You know, those, that also could have a, a larger effect on the personnel lines. And so we want to make sure that, that we're doing right by the staff and doing the right things with our salary schedule to keep up with cost of living as well as all of them.
See, you know, working with the village is, it's a blessing and a curse in some ways because it's, it's a blessing because it takes a lot of off the plate, a lot of expense off the plate, too. But this August deadline that the village requires means we have to do everything a lot earlier than the village does and earlier than the schools do and so forth. And so, it puts an additional burden on our staff.
And, and to be fair, the village staff is already working on their budget for next year as well. And so we are all, you know, while the levy itself doesn't get passed at the village level until later in the fall, winter, you know, then they're, they're already in their budget planning cycle as well.
Well, thank you for what you have presented us today. But yeah, I mean, I think for, in, because there's a lot of, you know, questions and things that need to be, it just doesn't make sense to ask you to come back with scenarios until we kind of firm up additional numbers, especially some of the big-ticket stuff. So, I think that's my opinion on.
I'm hoping that for the July will be a lot firmer and will have that salary schedule update for you. Will have a better estimated attainment for two thousand and twenty-four and just more solid estimates on, on all of these things. And be able to really firm up on the expenditure side, especially as we're looking at two thousand and twenty-five strategic work plan.
And again, personnel is, what, seventy percent of our budget? But there's, the other thirty percent is significant as well. And I know that we've always been invited if we have questions about the line items other than personnel in the, I mean, I don't want to know how many pieces of paper they're gonna buy. I don't want to get down to that level of minutia because that's what we pay them to do. But, but, you know, if we have questions, we can ask between meetings.
And in that, in the board packet, there is also a line item detailed for you that tells you a little more about what is in each line so that you have a better sense of, you know, what the supplies mean. What, what are small tools and equipment? Which is really a catch-up.
Matt has lots of questions, I assume, and hope.
He's so good. This is sponge right now.
I'm, I'm taking all of it.
Yeah. All right, do we have any other trustee comments or questions regarding the budget? I'm just gonna swing back around for else.
This is serious.
Yeah, let's do this. There's chairs that turn on and off. You would. All right, so number, item eleven on our agenda is unfinished business, which we do not have any. Item twelve is our executive session. We have no items to discuss in the executive session. So I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at nine thirty-nine PM. And I want to thank everyone for sticking it out with us, and thank you for your minutes.